We're missing Stefan. That's it. Is our 10-minute over? Is our 10-minute over? Okay. Well, we have to... We can go ahead and get started. Okay, we're going to get started. We will now move to the action portion of the agenda. I will note that action item number one was delayed to the February 3rd board meeting by an early vote. Janice, make the motion. So is that where you come in and make the motion? No, I don't think so. That's my agenda. Okay. We will now go on to item number two. The annual approval of schools.
Good evening, directors. Michael Stone, interim director of grants and fiscal compliance. I just wanted to provide some quick updates from when this was first introduced in December and the board meeting two weeks ago where it was delayed to tonight. That we've... Some steps that have taken place to ensure that the plans are up to date, that they have additional requirements that some board members recommended, and to address some questions that have taken place. As of yesterday... Well, let me back up, sorry. After the previous school board meeting on the 6th, we reached out to schools to make sure that they reviewed what was currently online, to make sure that was what their BLT had voted on. They then checked in with their executive... And this was done through the executive directors. Executive directors then received confirmation from the schools that they have updated it or what changes need to take place. That those schools then went in and were making changes. We uploaded all of those changes yesterday so that they were live to the public. With the holiday, staff was off. Yesterday was the upload day. So that we weren't doing them one at a time. We could get them all up at the same time. Things... Some questions that have come up were the links at schools. Each school webpage now has a link to their CSIP. So that piece was being worked on by Dots and was supposed to be fixed as of today. And I could confirm that later. We did add budget pages to all of the non-Titel 1 schools. So those are up so that they can view what baseline dollars they have, what grant dollars they may have, what levy dollars they may have if they're not the Titel 1 schools because that is the Titel 1 requirement for that. So that piece has been added. Again, these are work... We're working to fix the bugs. The technical issues that were happening was a link problem within the server. So we know the principals were having issues accessing the document. That piece was fixed on Thursday so that the documents were working... Or the tool was working faster for the schools to go in and work on them and make the updates.
I would actually like to call on the committee chair to state committee's recommendation for CNI. Okay. So you want to make motion to...
I move that the school board approve each school within the district as having a school improvement plan that is data-driven, promotes a positive impact on school learning, and includes a continuous improvement process pursuant to WAC 18016220.
I second the motion.
Okay, I'd like to go back to the committee chair for his recommendation.
This, I believe, came through CNI before I was on the board. And so I can't really speak to its approval, per se, by the committee. It was for introduction last month or last meeting.
Thank you. That... You're correct in that. We heard it on November the 9th. I believe I wasn't actually in the country at that time. But it was moved forward with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Is there any questions, Director Harris?
Is this comments and questions or just questions?
Comments and questions on this item.
Mr. Stone, congratulations. I know that this has been an extremely heavy lift. And I know you changed the culture of Seattle Public Schools and the CSIPS. And I know that you have gone ragged, chasing people down, and talking to principals and others that think that this is just a process to cross a T and to dot an I, just to make folks happy. And the qualitative difference between these CSIPS and the ones that have come before boards previously is huge. Is there room for improvement? Yes. However, the qualitative difference is amazing. And I think when we talk to schools about having more autonomy, this is one of the ways that they can drive that conversation. Thank you, and thank you to your team. I know it's been a heavy lift.
Thank you.
Director Burke?
I echo that. Thanks. For those who are not following the normal lingo, the edges speak that we've got here. A CSIP, a Continuous School Improvement Plan, is... I see it as like a strategic plan for a school at the building level. They're mandated by state law. They're intended to be a guiding tool for building-based improvements. And in the legislation, it specifically states that it should include active participation and input by building staff, students, families, parents, and community members. So this is really a foundational tool. It summarizes the budget breakdown. And just as a reference of how important it is, the new Seattle Education Association Collective Bargaining Agreement references a CSIP 21 times. So this is a document that shapes class and program decisions, hiring, professional development. It's referred to throughout district policies. So this is a really, really important document. And I appreciate the renewed focus on it and the improvement that they've seen in the last year. Because it's kind of a passion of mine, I reviewed all of the District 3 CSIPS. And I'm fortunate to only have 13 schools in District 3. So I really want to commend you and your staff and the principals for the work that's been done responding to the concerns that I and my colleagues have raised. One of the... One of the points I want to make that I've been discussing with Michael Tolly is the idea of improving the efficacy of the tool, the culture around the tool. And to support that, I'm proposing that we incorporate a CSIP policy and procedure into the CNI, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee's annual work plan. And that can help provide guidance for all principals to have, you know, a level of consistency that they recognize and that the board approves of that highlights that importance. And so I'm looking forward to actually hearing from principals and community and staff on how to keep making the CSIP a really high-value tool for transparency and building success.
Director Pinkham?
I want to definitely share the appreciation of having to go through collecting all the CSIPS. And I do like the addition that there will be a peer review process now in this to analyze how schools are doing, that they're not just making goals just to make goals. But we will have a follow-up to make sure that they are following what they say they're going to do. And having that peer review, I see it also build upon the successes of one school can be shared with another. So I appreciate that. I just wanted to share my appreciation. Thank you.
Any more comments, questions? Director Geary?
Thank you so much for being responsive to my pointing out that there were issues with the CSIP that I reviewed. And I have to say, I was hesitant about this particular motion just because when I went in and checked for myself, I wasn't able to find online what I thought should be there. But that I do appreciate and understand and how difficult it is to make sure that all these systems are working and that you were so responsive and that the principal of the school was so responsive. So I thank you. I thank everybody who works on these for all their hard work and that it needs to continue to be a collaborative effort to make sure that they are complete and that they are informing the public accurately of the work that is being done in our schools. So thank you.
No more question? Thank you very much. We're going on to our number three, capacity management. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Ms. Fodey, could you please call the vote?
Director Blanford?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Peters?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
This motion is passed unanimously.
Now we're going into number three, capacity management. 2016-2017 school year.
I move that the board authorize allocation of up to $2,250,000 from the BTA III and BEX IV capital funds and $4 million in OSPI class-size reduction capital gain... Sorry, capital grant monies to implement annual capacity management actions in spring semester 2015-16 and summer 2016 to support projected district homeroom capacity needs for 2016-17 and authorize the superintendent to take the necessary steps to implement the above actions.
I second the motion.
This came the ops, and it was recommended by the committee to actually to move it forward for full board consideration by the full board. I will note that there is an amendment for this item. We will discuss amendment prior to the original motion. I will also note that there have been changes to the original motion since introduction. So I'll ask Dr. Hernan to come up and briefly speak to the changes. Then we will discuss amendment.
Good evening. The changes to the original bar are fairly minimal. They're actually under Section 5 of the background information, down onto the third bullet around the capacity management actions. And this was changing from conversion of 19 childcare classrooms to 19 new homerooms. Having that change to preliminary approval of potential conversion of 19 childcare classrooms to 19 new K-5 homerooms. So that was the change to the original bar.
Now to the amendment. Is there a motion for this amendment? Director Geary?
I move... I move that the motion language for the Capacity Management 2016-17 School Year Action item be amended to include the following provisions. One, the district may reclaim Seattle Public School classrooms for dedicated K-5 instructional use and shall identify these classrooms as soon as possible, but no later than February 3rd, 2016. Two, the district shall create an act on a timeline for engagement with communities affected by the reclaiming of any Seattle Public Schools classrooms currently occupied by community-based organizations, CBOs, or other childcare providers to help find creative solutions, if possible, that will preserve the service provided for the Seattle Public Schools families within the school building or located nearby. And three, to direct the superintendent to bring forward for board review collaborative community input options for future capacity management decisions, including the option of establishing a community advisory committee or task force.
I second the amendment.
Okay, the director is making the amendment to speak to the amendment and why it's being offered.
There's been a lot of discussion on why such an amendment should be offered. I will start by saying that this amendment, of course, isn't going to answer everybody's questions. It's not going to necessarily make sure that every single daycare is preserved just as we know it today. But there were comments that were made that were very important to me. And I want everybody to know here that in our mind, this board's mind, that the closing of the daycares is not a done deal. And that when we say creative solutions, we mean creative solutions and bringing to bear all the resources available in any given community because each of you comes from a different community that has different needs and different options and different resources. And we need to bring the parents, the district, the people in the building, and the city in on these meetings so that we can look at the whole community and see what we can do. Because we are growing, we have many kids, we need to make sure that their whole day is being provided for before, after, and during their instructional time in K-5 elementary. So we're doing this. We understand that you need to know these things before enrollment. So February 3rd, we will all know. And then some can then start actively working within their community once you have that knowledge. We need a timeline that will be produced so that parents and communities know what decisions are going to be when, what channels of input are going to be most effective, and so that you can go into your buildings. Your buildings can have the kind of meetings that are necessary to invite everybody in. And I encourage you to invite the city in. They have written to us. They have said they are willing to work with us and work with you to find these solutions. Make sure they know when these meetings are being held so that they too can bring to bear their expertise on this. And then the third point is getting back to the issue that I stated earlier, that if we knew in the fall that this was coming down the road, then we should have had an advisory committee set up that invited input throughout our city to help us figure out if we needed to get here like we have today, causing so much anxiety. So call it FACMEC, call it a task force. But we need to have a vehicle that you know you can have input, you can send representatives to. And these are the amendments that... They're not perfect. They are not going to solve this. But this is the art of compromise. So that is the basis for this amendment.
Any directors have questions, comments? Director Blanford?
This question is for Dr. Hernan. I'm wondering... I'm assuming that you've had the opportunity to look at the amendment ahead of time. And I'm curious about the implications of it. My understanding is part of the reason that the schools weren't identified, that the communications didn't actually happen is because we need additional information about enrollment before we can make those announcements. And so I'm wondering, does this complicate matters for your department? Make it easier? What do we need to know about the implications of it?
To start with, yes, I was able to review this particular amendment before the meeting started. So I appreciate definitely being able to take a look at that and consider and speak a little bit to my departments about how this might impact our ability to continue to progress. I think that the initial projections that will be coming out in the beginning of February do help to identify those conversations to get started, knowing that there are a couple of other milestones that happen that can also have an implication on space that we need. So one of those is open enrollment. We know that doesn't end until the beginning of March. So there's another set of analyses. However, with that, I think we would continue to follow the Community Alignment Initiative guidelines, which annually happen between principals and community providers anyway in April. So I think this really helps to enhance that. I'm confident that our departments can continue to work well, continue to work with the city on finding good solutions, continue to work with our Community Development and Community Partnerships office. I think it's a good step to continue to hold our departments accountable for what we need to do. So I'm comfortable with the language that's in here and confident that we can do so in as timely a manner as possible.
Part of my reason for asking that question has to do with what I perceive is one of the large challenges of this, which is communicating the list of schools that potentially could have to evict their partners. Before we know for sure invites a huge amount of churn and upset parents and concern out in the community. And so I want to be sure, and it sounds like you're telling me, giving me assurance, that you will know the things that you need to know around the time that we're making that announcement. So we don't... We won't create another fire in trying to put this current one out.
Correct. And I just needed to make sure when I first saw this amendment, I double-checked with our director of enrollment planning, Ashley Davies, to make sure those projections are coming in and the time that we said they were coming in. And she assured me that is the case. So that allows us to get information to principals, and then they can start being part of that communication with the providers in their particular buildings.
Director Geary?
I appreciate the idea of not wanting to create fires where they don't exist or where they don't have to exist. But the truth of the matter is that I think a lot of these parents already feel the pressure within their schools. And they have been feeling that pressure. And that if they, rather than having been kept out of this conversation for so long, had been included much earlier in this conversation, they would have had more time to digest, more time to help in the process of creatively looking at their spaces, talking with their principals. And that is why I think the development of a task force as quickly as possible will not only help us finish out this year and the hard work we have to do, but there's no assurances that even if the parents in these schools are able to get through this year, if they have incredibly... If they continue to grow at these paces in these identified areas, then we will be back here next year. And so they will be back in that conversation come fall when we send out a letter to another set of schools saying, "We may be looking at reclaiming your space." And we need to just have this system set up now so that we can help them. If it's not this year, then next year and the year after. And so I thank you very much for your openness to this suggestion. You're talking with me last Friday, earlier today, and considering these ideas. I appreciate that very much and really want us to consider our parents our partners.
Director Burke?
Quick point of protocol. Are we voting just on the amendment or the package deal?
We're voting on the amendment first.
I have a comment which I think addresses the amendment and somewhat the base motion. We received a lot of input on this issue. And as you've heard, we... I think we all recognize that the potential for disruption is pretty huge. So I have... I was going to quote what I thought was a very succinct and spot-on input that I got from the community. "We rely on two incomes and are holding on in our city where exponential growth is constantly trying to push working families out. We don't have backup childcare. It took two and a half years on the waitlist to get into the program for our soon-to-be kindergartner." And so what that spoke to for me is that our city is... We have an environment where our parents have to be proactive to the point of two to three, sometimes more, years to get into a program. And so it definitely gives me pause. And I have to be really thoughtful about how, as a board director, we can look at something that's same year or even one year out. How do we get to that same level? Understanding that we have 98 buildings and we have, you know, almost 53,000 students. So a lot more families and bigger challenges. But I just wanted to speak to that as a supporting thing for the longer-term planning and how important that is and for the board, for the staff, for any sort of advisory committee.
Director Harris?
I've talked during this meeting previously about capacity management, specifically daycare. And we had quite a bit of commentary at the last meeting on January 6th. I would suggest that folks on this dais and the folks and the talent along the line of the walls here are not in this alone. I would suggest that we have an opportunity with district elections in the city of Seattle to hold hands, make a bigger circle, and to contact those city council members and to contact Mayor Ed Murray and suggest that this be capacity blowups and services part of the unknown agenda for the educational summit. It makes sense, doesn't it? Anyway, props to you and your team. Thanks for being open. Again, I apologize for harassing you. But my constituency is harassing me.
Director Peters?
No problem.
As a co-sponsor of this amendment, I would just like to read into the record the background information about this amendment. For a number of years, the Seattle School District has provided school-building space to private childcare providers, community-based organizations, free of rental fees. District families have availed themselves of and relied upon these convenient and often less expensive services. In recent years, district enrollment has steadily increased, growing at a rate of nearly 1,000 students per year. And the district is now facing many capacity challenges, resulting in crowded schools and large class sizes in some buildings. The district is also required by state law to reduce class sizes in kindergarten through third grade. In October 2015, a letter was sent by the Facilities and Enrollment Department to all before and after-school childcare providers located in Seattle school buildings, notifying them of the possibility that the district may need to reclaim classroom space for K-5 homeroom use in the 2016-17 school year. The district has and continues to engage with the school buildings and CBOs to transition these programs out of designated classrooms needed for K-5 instruction. However, Seattle Public School families also should be granted an opportunity to understand and participate in the transition process. Thank you.
Director Pinkham?
Yes, this is definitely a challenge, especially when we try to combine it with the new bell times as well and bus routes and bus schedules. It is a very difficult decision. And when we look at, you know, saying we need the 65 new classroom spaces, just want to assure that when we look at this, that 19 childcare classrooms being potentially repurposed, that that is hopefully the least invasive, that you... There isn't any possibilities of finding other space through, yes, portables, but that's going to take up valuable space on the sites or in the repurposing other rooms. And a lot of this, I know, has to deal with where that capacity issue's at. And so it is going to be a very difficult decision. And how can we handle this? When we're saying we're going to probably ask that this be a preliminary approval, I'm even kind of worried about that. What does that provide, preliminary approval? Do we need to say that, "Let's strike this from this right now"? And that this can be looked at... You know, we can still move forward with the other claiming the space back. But this is a huge issue to me and something that... I need to, again, get that more information before we can really truly feel like I'm getting an informed vote.
Is there any more, Director Blanford?
So I don't know if I heard a question in Director Pinkham's comment, but it prompts in my mind a question, which is, what would be the implications of what he's proposing to do?
So again, part of this is our lead planning time about what we're trying to accomplish. to accomplish. Any permitting, any planning, any architectural designs or modifications, if we need to do that in particular locations. This is kind of the, it's not moving on the particular sites. This is the potential of 19 particular spots, but that's why we're, we're waiting until the actual identification of our first enrollment projections that will be coming out in February. So this is basically an allocation of resources to begin that planning. We won't be moving on any of that action. There are no leases or agreements that are being terminated as a result of this. This is the beginning of the conversation for our planning stage. So this allows us the resources to start to move forward so that we can have classrooms ready to go at the beginning of September. That's, that's the whole purpose of this.
So to follow your thought, if, if we were not to approve the original motion or the agenda, or the amendment, and some have characterized that as kicking the can down the road, the implication of that for the start of the school year next year would be what?
Well, it's, again, it's a challenge that we know sometimes when we file applications for either permits or processes that have to be done by the city, they can take time. Now, we do have an agreement with the city where they expedite most of our items and put them at the top of the list. And if we have an appeal for something, they put that at the top of the list, too. But these are all still months out, which is why we do the preparation about this time. And this, the timing of this is pretty consistent. We come around about this time for a capacity management bar. Then when we get the more information, we sharpen that focus on the particular schools. There are some times in locations, for instance, when we start to do portable placement, that we might open up a permit for, to place a portable because the process takes so long at more sites than we might actually need because it gives us the flexibility after open enrollment, when we have more information, that we're not behind and we have no shot at getting that permit approved. So it's a sequence of all of those. So these particular locations, if there's a classroom that does need to be repurposed, sometimes it requires a modification, sometimes it doesn't. So the planning of the modifications, we would have to know by those particular buildings. That's why, again, this is the, basically the resources to allow us to move forward with the planning. It's not the termination of anybody's lease. It's not saying, "You're out and it has to happen now." This is the sequencing of what we're trying to do. I just want to make sure that we've got enough lead time so that we have everything ready in September when our students start day one. Part of this sequencing will also be, once we know if there is something moving from one spot to another, we're trying to be very mindful of the fact that some locations have a summer program that are going. So we want to have the conversations with them about what are the programs that are happening for the rest of the year and then what's happening for the summer. Obviously, that would be after we're saying, "Okay, I think we have identified a new space that's going to work for you. We're working with the city on licensure." That was brought up previously as well. So we're trying to work with the city and the Department of Early Learning at the state level to help expedite and identify the spots that can be licensed so that they will be approved to be able to do that. And in the meeting on January 8th, there were representatives both from the state and the city, and they heard that very clearly from providers as well. So again, there's, all of these things just take time. So we're trying to get ahead of what we can do, knowing that, once we have the resources, we can continue to, to solve some challenges because we'll have the resources to be able to do so. So that's my, that's our biggest reason for, for coming at this particular time.
Any more questions?
And I just want to interrate that, that is the whole reason why we're actually, this is, we're voting on this tonight, is to make sure that the staff has enough time to actually to order the things that they need to order, the permits that they need to, to move forward. So that way, things will be on time to get our kids ready for school next year. It's not a done deal. This is not a vote to actually to say we're going to close any schools, any after-school or programs down. It's just to move things a little bit forward. So right now, we're going to call for a vote. Ms. Foley? We're, we're voting on that amendment right now.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Peters?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Nay.
Director Blandford?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
This motion has passed by a vote of six to one.
Okay, so I'm now going to read in the, the motion as amended. So I move that the board authorize allocation of up to $2.5 million from the BTA III and the BECS IV capital funds and $4 million in OSPI class size reduction capital grant monies to implement annual capacity management actions in spring semester 2015-16 and summer 2016 to support projected district homeroom capacity needs for 2016-17 and authorize the superintendent to take the necessary steps to implement the above actions as amended by Amendment One.
I second the motion as amended.
Okay, we, motion passed. We now move on to our next.
No, no, no. We have to take a vote.
I know. We're going to move on to the vote for that one.
Any discussion?
Is there any questions, discussion on this before we move on to the next vote? Yes?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, again, it's just, I can't see us, or myself personally, I have to speak for myself, voting on something that just seems a little bit too open right now. And I, I'm aware that we do need to have this base issue addressed, that we have this timeline, but parents have timelines as well. So this seems like this should have been something done two years ago to address this, but I know just the situation we're in and then I just want to share my reason why I said nay, that voting on something that just seems too unclear right now.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, Ms. Foley? Call the vote.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Peters?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Nay.
Director Blandford?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
This motion has passed by a vote of six to one.
So we're now going to our next item. Recommendation to Award Contract for Furniture Procurement 2016 Projects.
Do you have to read bid number? Do you have to read? Did you read all that? Did I read the title?
Yeah. I don't have it.
Oh, okay. Recommendation to Award Contracts for Furniture Procurement for 2016, bid number B09501. Recommended motion. I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to execute contracts for the furniture procurement for 2016 with the following eight vendors. Business Interiors Northwest Incorporated in the amount of $1,479,654.50. GOF Incorporated, DBA Ducky's Office Furniture in the amount of $507,180.70. McDowell Craig Office Systems Incorporated in the amount of $361,300. Office Depot Incorporated in the amount of $299,590.30. Bragg Investments, DBA Saxton Bradley in the amount of $600,000, $600,600, sorry, $6,600. And School Specialty Incorporated in the amount of $1,444,263.70. Verco Incorporated in the amount of $553,793.50. And Diversification Incorporated, DBA WorkPoint in the amount of $790,350. Plus Washington State Sales Tax in the form of the agreements attached to the board action report with any minor deletions, additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract.
I second the motion.
This also came to Ops and it was recommended by the committee to move it forward for full board approval. Is there any questions, comments, discussions on this item? Okay, Ms. Foley? Can we get the vote?
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Peters?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Blandford?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, we're into our introduction items. We only have one tonight. Contract for Middle School and High School Yearbooks. And I'm actually looking at CNI, I think the, Director Blatter?
This item was considered by the Curriculum and Instruction Committee on December the 14th and recommended to the board for approval.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Nichols. I'm from Curriculum and Instruction and I'm here this evening to present the middle school and high school yearbook contract. So this evening, I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with HIRF-Jones in the amount not to exceed $400,000, including three optional annual extensions for the management and classroom support in the preparation and printing of middle school and high school yearbooks in the form of a draft agreement presented to the school board with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract. I am going to basically go over the review process that we led a group of middle school and high school yearbook advisors through and then open it up for any questions that you might have. We worked very closely. This is a process that has been a joint process between contracting services and operations and curriculum instruction. The reason it sits in our department now partially has to do with the fact that many of our, our courses titled yearbooks follow under the ELA catalog, if you will. And so it sits between us and contracting services. It was a closely collaborative process. In early, actually late September, we began the process of looking for the, toward the RFP for a new contract. HIRF-Jones has currently had the contract and has had annual renewals of that successfully, but that contract is, is over. And so we're looking forward to a new contract. In late September, we began the process of getting some feedback from yearbook advisors in terms of whether the current specifications that we had used on the previous yearbook RFP were relevant or whether any modifications needed to be added to the request. And then we also, at that time, invited middle school and high school yearbook advisors to serve on a review committee. In early October, it was posted in the Daily Journal of Commerce, Builders Exchange, and on the Seattle Public Schools website. The RFP notification was emailed directly to Balfour, Entourage, HIRF-Jones, Justin's, and Walsworth. On October 29th, the RFP due date, we had four companies, Balfour, HIRF-Jones, Justin's, and Walsworth submit proposals and products for review. In early November, the review committee conducted an initial review and scoring of the proposals and the product qualifications. Based on the committee's collective points, the qualifications section only, there were two front runners that kind of surfaced at that point, and those two vendors were HIRF-Jones and Justin's. Part of the initial review process for these proposals are that the, the reviewers do not see the pricing points that are set by contracting services based on their quote, just so that that is not clouding in any way their review of the product. And so at that point, contracting services took those initial scoring points and added to that the pricing points. At that point, a third vendor surfaced because of their strong pricing points that were awarded based on their contract, or on their proposal, excuse me, and that was Balfour. Walsworth scored last place in qualifications and third place in price at that point, excluding them from further consideration. We had an additional meeting with the reviewers because when they left, they had a strong sense of the two front runners, but this new addition of the price points brought a, a vendor into the, into the picture that they hadn't seen at that time. We had the additional meeting and updated the team as to that, and they felt comfortable as a team moving three forward, Balfour, HIRF-Jones, and Justin's into the finalists. At that point, they had some clarifying questions that they were asking of vendors that surfaced during the review, mainly based on workshop services and services provided to schools. And they wanted more assurance, assurances and information that these vendors would be able to fulfill the needs of schools. They were able to get those clarifying questions and information. And in late November, the team then reviewed additional, that additional information and conducted their final scores. At that time as well, contracting services had asked for clarification and the best and final pricing, which is what we ended up with. HIRF-Jones ranked first in qualifications for the product and tied for first place with Balfour for pricing. A final calculation review of pricing points conducted by contracting services surfaced a wider discrepancy between Balfour and HIRF-Jones. There was a 15% discount if the contract was awarded to all middle school and high schools. It could have been offered to either or both, and that then created a clear frontrunner. Justin's had strengths in products and expertise, but their price was double, which eliminated them from consideration. The committee's recommendation was consistent with individual advisors. And at that point, the recommendation for the contract with HIRF-Jones is being brought forth, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Directors have any questions, comment? Director Peters?
When we discussed this in the Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting, I, I asked the question, and I'm just going to reiterate it, that are schools generally happy with the yearbooks that are published by HIRF-Jones?
As part of the renewal, the annual renewal process for the additional years on the contract, there's a renewal process that we ask the yearbook advisors for their feedback in terms of whether or not they are happy with the product, the service that they receive throughout the year and in the delivery and services. And they have consistently come back as strong feedback in favor of the company. Statements such as "They're easy to work with," "They have very prompt service when we need them," that type of.
Thank you. Any more questions, comment? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And it is 8:10. Our meeting is adjourned.